Town Hall is sending to the officially designated newspapers indicating that the meeting will take place at the community center at six thirty in the state. The fire exits are located in the far right corner of the back and to my media left in front. Per resolution one fifty-six dash twenty, establish a new contact in the corner for public meetings, please see attached following. All members of the public must step up to the designated public microphone, state for the record their name and address before addressing mayor and council. Roll call.
Councilman Agliotta.
Here.
Councilman Haynes.
Here.
Councilman Hurley.
Here.
Councilman McCallum.
Here.
Councilman Slakbar.
Here.
Council president. Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in which we are the government for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have approval minutes for your regular meeting June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
Paul there?
Aye.
I have one piece of correspondence. Dear Rockaway, residents of West Flagfleet are hosting a block party on Saturday, August twenty-fourth through forty-eight P M. Rain date Sunday, August twenty-fifth, we are requesting a road closure for part of West Flagfleet from Beach to Brook. If D B W could drop off bearings or Friday, it would be greatly appreciated. All residents of West Flag, the neighboring streets will be invited informed, and we do not anticipate any objections since it was such a success last year. Please see attached flyer, we'd like to invite any municipal employees as well as the mayor and council to join us if available. Just remember to bring something for the potluck. Thank you, Katie Clark, sixty-six West Flag. As I understand, this was already circulated to the chief and lieutenant, and they don't have any issues with this.
When's the date again? August twenty?
Saturday, August twenty-fourth.
And then the rainy season?
Correct.
Motion to approve block party requested by Miss Clark for August twenty-fourth and.
Rain data.
Rain data, yes. Second.
Paul there?
Aye.
Could you respond there? You're ready? I have one presentation tonight. I have Money and Strategies here to talk about grant opportunities or grant contractor type response stuff to help us identify grants, but I'll give you a couple of minutes to do the presentation.
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Pete Blas, I am the director of business development of Money and Strategies. So Money and Strategies, we have been in operation since two thousand and five, providing grant consulting services on behalf of local governments. Our primary focus as a firm is to help those governmental entities navigate that process. So we handle grants at all levels, so on the governmental side, federal, state, county grants. On the corporate side, that also includes, I'm sorry, the private sector side includes corporate grants, nonprofit grants, family foundations. We try to leave no stone in turn in terms of the type of funding that we're seeking out on behalf of our clients. In addition, as a firm, we specialize in all areas of local government operations. So everything from public works, parks and recreation, police, fire, historic preservation, sustainability. If there's a grant out there and there's some way that we can tie it to one of our clients' projects, programs, needs, we're actively working to do that on a continual basis. We represent about a hundred and seventy local governments throughout five states. The primary base of our operations is here in New Jersey, where we represent probably just shy a hundred municipalities and counties. Probably about ten or so in Morris County as well, and we are headquartered in Morris Town as well, so we're very familiar with the area. Forty employees on staff, we are a grants-focused firm, this is all we do, we're not an engineering firm or lobbying firm. We engage engineers or lobbyists, but this is all we do, so we think we're kind of a niche company. And because we're so focused on this, we had a lot of success on behalf of our clients over the years. So in the last year alone, we've helped secure more than three hundred and fifty million dollars in grant funding on behalf of our clients. Last year alone, we filed roughly two thousand grant applications on our behalf. So I think we have the expertise but also the capacity to help meet the needs of the folks that we work with. We have a variety of remodels services that we offer. Again, there's some that are more geared towards large urban centers and counties with a lot of infrastructure, crime, light, a lot of need. But at the very base level, every municipality has a lot of the same needs, right? There's roads being paved, there's parks that need to be improved, police need equipment, fire need equipment. So there's ways that we help communities of all shapes, sizes and profiles to help kind of improve their grant procurement processes. The way we do that is really through three main services that we offer. First is grant research. We have a team on staff comprised of five people that work forty hours a week to find money. When they find it, they identify it, they do the deep dive into grant programs, they pull out the, you know, the key information our clients need to make informed decisions about whether grants are viable to pursue. We put those into memos each week, and then those are transmitted to our clients weekly for their review and consideration. From there, one of our main services that we offer, and I think it's assuming you can take a proactive approach to finding money. In addition, the grant writing, so, you know, when we presented an opportunity, we interface with our clients to help them, you know, tell them what they can utilize the funding for, how they can best position themselves for success, and then ultimately quarterback that application process from start to finish. Laying out application requirements, gathering data, working through department heads or engineer, all members involved with the project, to get all the information we need to then tell the best story possible. We take the lead on writing the application, filling out the paperwork, letters of support, resolutions, all of that we handle from start to finish to the point where we submit the grant on your behalf. And then lastly, we do have some ability also to assist with grant administration. It's more grant administration-like, we can help with contract execution, filing of reports, things like that, but we can support some of those backend services after a grant as well. So I like to think we're a very unique company in what we do, but I also like to think we bring a lot of value to the communities that we work with, and we had a lot of success in doing so over the last, going on twenty years that we've been in operation. So that's kind of the overview of who we are, what we do, how we do it, and.
Yep, so a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
And I'll just throw the questions out that you can answer. Number one, you know, what towns in Morris County or some of them that you, you know, do work with? And then, you know, payment type stuff, do you work on a contract basis or is it really based on the grant, getting the grant, and then looking for some type of payment?
Sure, absolutely. So the municipalities, I'm gonna see how they run their race here, but I can tell you definitively, the town of Morris Town, Pershing, Troy Hills, Dover, Wharton, Kinnon, Jefferson, Hanover Township, Chatham Borough, Mount Arlington.
That's good.
We're not the other. What towns in Morris County don't you serve?
That's the real question. So town in all shapes, sizes, profiles from throughout the county. As far as our way our fee structures work, really the model that we would propose for the borough would be our Flex Grant Consulting Service. Basically, what this is gonna do is it's gonna provide you with access to all of the services that I described, but it allows you to take advantage of it in sort of a cost-effective and flexible fashion. So it includes the delivery of grant research on a weekly basis from both governmental and non-governmental sources, all of our grants out there that are available. And then access to our team, a designated point of contact in our office, they can call at any time, once a year, once a month, once a week, once a day. They're your resource there to answer questions about grants we presented to you and that you're considering. Grants that you may have received and we didn't present them to you, but you would like to apply for them or consider them, they're there to be your, you know, expert from our team. And then the grant writing, we would do one project-by-project basis. Some of our, we actually have several of those Morris County municipalities I mentioned have been utilizing our Flex program. Some utilize us to write one grant a year, some are calling us once a month, right? It's flexible because the fees for the grant writing are done on a project-by-project basis. So the only upfront cost to the municipality would be for the access to the grant research and the ongoing consultations. If I may, it's a five thousand dollar flat annual fee for access to that, continual delivery of the research, access to our team. And in addition, you also have access to our grants portal where this information is logged, it's web-based. Department heads, mayor, council can all have access to it, you can see what grants were sent to you. And then from there, the project fees are assessed for flat consulting fees, we provide you with a project agreement for each grant you're interested in pursuing, which would outline and not exceed cost. And, you know, that would be the maximum, you know, percentages of commissions that we take on any grant awards. So if we get you a million dollars, the only cost to you is the cost that I've got to prepare the application. Enjoy your million dollar grant. Hopefully you get a million dollar grant.
And that's on individual application basis?
Correct. So.
Are any of your costs allowable under the twenty-eighty rule? So in other words, you go for a grant, you gotta kick in a little skin in the game quote, quote-unquote, would your fees be included in that twenty percent?
It's a good question. There are some grants, you know, FEMA's one in particular that allows you sometimes reimburse the cost for professionals. The idea of that is that they want professionals involved managing the money and applying for the money. So FEMA is one example of where you can get some reimbursement, it's a percentage of the grant it'll reimburse up to. But most do not. Whether that applies to a match, I don't think so. I don't think our fees would be applicable to a match for a project.
Yeah, because I know most of them are engineering in background and administration and things like that.
Right.
You know, so it's a cost of, you know, that grant that has to be borne by the municipality.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Correct. Where do you find the most popular grants are? What are folks going after right now? I mean categorically, how are they looking at them?
I think probably just from our perspective in terms of the types of grants we're applying for mostly, it's public works, roads, pedestrian safety, infrastructure, water, still those types of improvements. Parks and recreation are a big part of what we do, and then public safety, police, fire, and emergency management. I would say if you were to choose the top three categories, those would be. But we're seeing a lot of new, some of the money coming out for green, infrastructure, green energy, historic preservation, we do a lot of work in that space, health and human services, obviously there's a ton of money that's out during the COVID period, but we like, we have our finger on the pulse of it. So when those opportunities do become available, you're gonna be aware of it.
Cool.
I just wanna make one comment if I could. I think this is an exciting opportunity. I'm involved in grant writing in my professional life, and there was a time when many of us did that on the side of our desks, and you can imagine what our results were. We were successful in getting some grants, but the administration and compliance with it afterwards is a big deal.
It's a big deal, yes.
We now have dedicated resources and we are knocking it out of the park for, obviously, healthcare and workforce labor issues. But I think an investment in something like this has the opportunity for a really great return.
No question. So the five thousand is the base, right? And from there, it's a percent of whatever the grant is cost, is that your fee? Is that how it works? Their service is five percent, or how does that work?
So the five thousand dollar fee upfront gets you access to all the delivery of the grant research each week, and it gets you the access to our team to interface with as many times as you want throughout the year. From there, if you authorize us to write a grant on your behalf, we would basically provide you with a project agreement, which would outline and not exceed cost for preparing that, that we would assess based upon the estimated time we can, if we believe we can take, prepare the application. And we would only proceed with writing the grant once we receive approval, sign approval on that.
So basically a contract for every grant that we create?
Is there a flat percent you do, or is that part of the grant, or does that have to be separate to the town, bill to the town?
It's, it would be separate, it would be bill to the town.
And is there a flat percent? I'm just curious on it. The money, is there a flat percent that you do, or based on project or project?
So, yeah, so basically what we do is we calculate it at an hourly rate, so we have a rate that we utilize, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So if it were to be ten hours of estimated work, you get a consulting fee of fifteen hundred dollars per hour, of fifteen hundred dollars. And we offer that at a discounted rate compared to how we would quote it for customers that are just reaching out to us about individual grants. So if you're just coming to us and say, hey, can you write this grant for me? We would be calculating those fees at a higher rate to write it, just a small incentive to, to engage with us in a more proactive program.
I'm gonna try and phrase this in the correct way. Do your research folks, let's say we get a weekly form, we say, boy, that grant looks good, this looks good, this is good. Can they give us a wink or a nod and saying, eh, your probability of getting this grant would be this much, or maybe this much, but I really think you ought to go for this one? Because as Melissa said, writing the grant is work enough. I've done the grants. But as Melissa also mentioned, you get audited, and I was audited a ton of times, this was in a, you know, publicly traded company. It took me months to go through that closeout. So I'm just wondering, question A, do you kind of give us a signal of, yeah, you might not want to look at that one, or that one you really should go for?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, with the service being a little bit more reactive in the sense that, you know, if you found a grant that we presented to you, you said this is something we're interested in, we have, this is what we're thinking about applying for. Our job of our team and our consultants is to give you the best possible guidance as to whether or not the grant is viable for you to pursue. Whether you pursue it independently without our assistance, and definitely, you know, obviously, either what, equal, whether you're using us to write it or you're writing it independently. We want you in a position where you're gonna have success. Grant writing, as you mentioned, is laborious, there's a lot of work that goes into it, it's just sort of spin your wheels and apply for something that, you know, you might just find out, hey, that project wasn't eligible, we didn't meet his criteria. We're gonna tell you that upfront as a part of those consultations, and so we can put you in the best position possible to secure that. Great. So I see you have some materials to hand out? Sure. This is just our general form profile, just for.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Your name again, I'm sorry?
Pete. Yep. Thank you.
I'll wait up to John.
Okay, yeah.
He's got my contact, I got his.
Yeah, fortunately you're made.
That's why he's.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Yes, take care.
Is the public entitled in that document, or no?
There's no reason to. It was just a presentation to council.
Yeah, I heard it.
Yeah.
Could I have a?
I'm not open to the public, George.
What's that?
The meeting is not open to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Followed that.
Counselor reports. Councilman Slakbar.
Evening, Mayor, Council for our residents. I was about to say, tonight, we're still working on our ordinance. We have two problems with Buravich, so we'll work with attorney on some things. So we will be meeting on the fifth of August, Monday. Yes, the fifth.
Fifth of August.
Yeah, August fifth.
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Is that August fifth?
I'm sorry?
Is that August fifth or the fifth of August?
August fifth.
Okay.
But that's what the ordinance committee, but the only thing I'll bring up is, I'm sure Councilman Hurley, you talked about is the car show. Call Cars and Coffee, just so you know. So attended, it was great, and I know Mayor there, had a really good time, really turned it on. So that's just my report time, Mayor, thank you.
Motion to accept report of Councilman Slakbar?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Hurley?
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow council members, members of the public. Councilman Slakbar mentioned, we did have our second annual Cars and Coffee on Sunday. Sixty-two cars participated in the event, and we probably had as many visitors and spectators. And I know that there were quite a few families there who had a very nice time. Councilman A was there, and with his son, and I know Bonnie was there.
Thanks.
So all that fine iron that was rolling around there, and I think people had a great time. You can usually tell very quickly when the umbrellas and the tents go up, they're gonna be there for a while. This year we had food, very nicely done by Riverside Cafe, and we'll be doing it again next year. So stay tuned for a date that we'll be publishing it, and this came together, weather came together, all the cars.
Well done. Well done.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank Tom, because Tom and Dave Conville were the two chairpersons from the committee who put that whole show together. Did a great job. Did a great job. And finally, I have a public service announcement tonight, and this is on behalf of my wife, Mrs. Hurley, who's a member and big time bone here for the Rockaway Food Plaza. The Rockaway Food Plaza has experienced a significant drop, I mean, a real quick drop in donations. Also, the middle of the summer is the highest load time that they serve for the community. There's, by the way, folks, there's over a hundred, I think it's over a hundred and ten families that Food Plaza serves, families in a situation crisis and in need. She's asked me to just ask you all, your friends, your family, your neighbors, if you could spread the word that these are the things that they are in critical need of right now. Canned soup, canned vegetables, boxed potato stuffing, rice, pasta and sauce, crackers, a cold drink mix, and coffee and tea. Those are the big items, staples that they need right now, and you can deliver them over to the Presbyterian church. It's the door behind the Presbyterian church from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and tea and tea. And also, at any time the library is open, Melissa O'Kroblum has a collection location that they pick up from every day. So that's my public service announcement. Anything you would do to help get the word out would be greatly appreciated to help those that are in crisis in the community. Thank you. That's my report, Mayor.
Motion to accept report of Councilman Hurley?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Paul there?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Agliotta?
Thank you, Mayor. Council residents. Just to add on, so I attended the Cars and Coffee event as well, very well received, beautiful, beautiful cars, they're works of art, they just don't make cars like that anymore. And as Councilman Hurley said, my son attended, really enjoyed himself, so that's always a joy. Thank you to Historical Society, Tom, Dave, all the other residents and businesses that pitched in, really great event. Also attended the Parks and Rec meeting once passed Tuesday, very well attended, you know, similar sentiments to the last council meeting, which I'm sure you'll report on as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Motion to accept report of Councilman Agliotta?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Haynes?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and our esteemed public. D B W report, D B W has been working with New Jersey Natural Gas on the resurfacing of Illycroft, Harrison, Addison, and Arbor Apps, where they're running new lines. D B W is also working on field and catch basins, very important time of year for that, for Billy and the team. They also restored a water main break on Woodstone Road the other day, and they are still continuing to do their natural holes, fields, parks, and other recreational work. They have installed a new tap also on a couple of residences to assist them. Also, they're working on the punch list of items on Addison and Crestwood as well as Mount Pleasant. Regarding downtown redevelopment, we have another property interest in downtown redevelopment. Patty has the information, there'll be more to come soon on that. Past Tuesday night, I, yeah, Tuesday night, I attended the Board of Ed school meeting. They have over twenty-five students enrolled in their summer learning program, which apparently is one of the higher enrollments they've had in numerous years. Also got to see a presentation from T J Principal Leon Samuels, which was very interesting. He talked about the district as a whole coming up on the new grading system. So rather than sixth grade grading this way, eighth grade grading that way, the teachers and all, they took some kind of learning sessions, and apparently they're gonna try and enforce this new grading system so everybody will grade equally. There will be some flexibility in some grade levels, but it seemed like a really good idea. They're also adding for the first time, and I, I think he said that this was gonna be a pilot program, they're talking about a study hall for grades fourth, fifth, seventh, and eighth, and what they're finding is that the kids today are just having a lot of trouble between recreational activities or, you know, whatever, karate, whatever they may be doing after school. They're having a lot of trouble getting all their homework completed. So they're hoping that they can work with the students to do the homework during study halls, which hopefully it will be a lot harder. I went to study hall of ourselves, we played cards. Also, at the August twenty-seventh meeting, they will be discussing adding holidays to the school calendar. Apparently that's a pretty big hot button issue with some of the families around the town, so they're gonna address that at the twenty-seventh meeting. And last but not least, two board positions will be open this year. Jeff, Tobias is gonna be leaving, and Karen Walter. So there's gonna be two open positions, and the petitions will need to be filed by this Tuesday the thirtieth. If anybody is any interested, please call the school at nine seven three six two five eight six hundred. And I believe that's all I have.
Great, thanks. Motion to accept report of Councilman Haynes?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Paul there?
Aye.
Councilman McCallum?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I attended the, this past Tuesday, the recreation meeting on Tuesday the twenty-third. It's the first time we had the audience in our public session in a long time, we had a lot of people attend. Thank you, Councilman Slakbar, Agliotta, and the mayor showed up as public. So some good discussion, I know, last time we talked about the parks program, summer parks program, a lot of discussion between the committee members, our rec director, our public, a lot of discussion, so a lot of discussion about financials, or working overall. There's a lot of details on that, as well as a lot of regulations have changed, so we're discussing that. So as of two thousand and twenty-four, not put in place, but it's gonna be put in place next year, two thousand and twenty-five, there's a lot of regulations around that. A lot of facility requirements that are gonna be needed. So it's a lot of information, a lot of information came to the meeting, all the details were taken in. Our Parks and Rec Director, Rob O'Connor, has it, a lot of discussion, just, you know, really great discussion back and forth. So I'm not sure, but, you know, maybe we'll add anything, but that's what I took from that meeting, a lot of discussion about it, so. Couple other things that I know we brought up from, Council President Burnside brought up about the volunteer pick, we brought that up. There's a lot of planning with the spectacular in October, they do off plan in October, so again, a lot of our committee members are the volunteers already, so they will be volunteering.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, so some discussion, there's more to come, so they are definitely, I think, you know, interested in doing that and bringing that, doing something, they're definitely needed. Then also they brought up also the library that sponsored the yoga on the beach last year, so that came up asking about that. Does any other programs the library could do, or anybody could do? So some kind of summer programs, if it's either a library, or somebody asking some interest on those different programs, I'm not sure if we could do that. The last thing is, I guess there was some recent damage at Donatoni Park, I guess the tree and the shed that was damaged in total was put by the Donatoni Smallfield, that has been replaced, I'm understanding that has been done, so. Yeah, just, it was a good meeting, it's really had some good public and member dialogue. Again, I'm not sure if everyone's adding, you know, there, but again, a lot of stuff was taken from the meeting, so. That's all I have.
Yeah, all I wanted to say was, is I had a conversation with Rob, and I don't know if it's, we, if I was thinking maybe that we should be planning the volunteer, and let the volunteers not have to plan their own appreciation thing, and I was thinking, maybe I get some department heads or whatever, and we kind of take that over. Because the whole point is this group has been doing, well, they're planning, 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 and I was thinking, it's late for us to say, oh, we're gonna have an appreciation for the volunteers. I think the volunteers are. Make it work, Mayor. So that was just my suggestion, that we kind of maybe consider taking that over on our side to do it for the volunteers, instead of having the volunteers do it for themselves. So I can coordinate that with Rob, and I can tell, if I get some, you know, department head or even some staff that maybe want to help and do it.
Us, yeah.
Yeah, we should all do that.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, you know, get together sometime. I, I guess, like you said, it just kind of sounded, seemed silly to have volunteers, plan the volunteers, so.
I, I have to comment on that, because I was a volunteer picketing years ago, they wanted to start the mayor of the bar. And unfortunately, the mayor council ran it, that's who put it together. If you probably remember, Melissa, your mom, we did. And there is some department heads uptown, so it's food football.
No, it's good food football.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I am sorry, I didn't know.
One other thing, I'd like to do something, uh, I'm not sure, or else my head is that Rob, um, stepped down as a Rowdy's for over ten years,
so if there's something we could do, um, you stepped down, if there's something we could do, you just give him a, you know, a proclamation or something. But ten years of serving, uh, so he was doing dual duty of both jobs with that, so, uh, he asked him to torch down. So, um, ten years, a long time to run a program, and especially eating for a while, so.
So if you wanna do something, bring something forward, you can start.
I'll work with you guys. Okay.
I also need a closed session for contract negotiations.
Okay. Anything else, Matt?
I'm sorry, this is a report, any question for? Okay.
Motion to accept your report, Councilman McDonald?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. Council President Burnside?
Thank you, Mayor. I had previously reported that the Board of Health was suggesting an increase to pet licensing fees by three dollars. So increasing from, they're now seventeen or twenty dollars, increasing to twenty or twenty-three. And in, in the event that this were to, um, be approved, they also then want to pass along a higher reimbursement to veterinarians that participate in the rabies voucher program. So I, um, am going to ask for permission that we begin drafting that ordinance with Ken's support. We had originally, the, uh, our health officer had thought it was a board of health ordinance, but it is not, it's a town ordinance, but it belongs to us.
Do we have any, uh, other communities that have kind of like a boilerplate that we could use as a template?
I think it's an amendment.
It's just an amendment.
Um, and the only other thing I just wanted to just quickly report on is I did follow up with our labor attorney today, or yesterday, um, regarding the white collar agreement. Um, apparently the memorandum of understanding has been signed on their end, but their attorney is on vacation, and we don't have a copy of it, so I am anticipating that we will get that next week, and the contract will be drawn up, and we will, and that will be finalized within a short time.
Nice job, alright.
Thank you. And that's all.
Motion to accept your report of the council president?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. Mr. Attorney?
Good evening, everybody, uh, I just have one item to report, uh, very good news. I presented the mayor with, uh, the final draft of the, uh, settlement agreement in connection with Twelve Vanderhoff. Um, as everybody knows, uh, it provides for payment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars within thirty days. Uh, I'm expecting that we'll have a signed copy from the other side, probably early next week, in which case, we should get that check before September, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that's all.
And maybe we should pay some, some pretty thanks to someone at Porch for.
Well, that's all, uh, they agree, in the, in the agreement, they agreed that when we're able to invade title, that they, them or whoever owns the property purchased from them will agree to accept title and ownership. The issue is, though, we need to probably act to, to clear title in that area, because quite honestly, it's, it's sort of a, a waste of resources, we should get them on the rolls or, or whoever else. And quite honestly, that development brought, but otherwise, you know, unnoticed issue to our attention, and, you know, now we can, we can, uh, take action to, uh, to get that resolved. And that would be my report.
Great. You know, that, you know, thanks to our attorney, thanks to our administrator, uh, all the work that went into, uh, negotiations with, uh, that group, so. Motion to accept your report of the attorney?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Where the mayor, uh, Phil Ting's, uh, police report. So for the month of June, uh, they had one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven calls for service, they had forty motor vehicle crash investigations, fifty-five traffic stops, forty-nine citations, and eight arrests. Also, for tonight, uh, on June twenty-sixth, Chief Pepperman was awarded the Chief Sandy Danko Service Award by the New Jersey State Association, Association of Police Chiefs for having the dedication, advancing interest of professional law enforcement leadership in New Jersey, and outstanding service to the association. The award was presented in Atlantic City during the New Jersey State Chiefs Convention. Pictures of Chief Pepperman receiving the award can be found on the department's Facebook page. On July fifteenth, the police department had their onsite accreditation assessment conducted by NGSA COP. This included an inspection of the facility, thorough review of department standard operating procedures, evidence procedures, and training. They concluded with a call-in portion welcoming comments and input from the public, patrol officer ride-along, and excellent interview with the chief of police and lieutenant, and the accreditation manager. This onsite evaluation provided that the department is operating within the highest accreditation standards, consistent with the best police practices of today. Uh, also, the police department is in need of part-time substitute crossing guards for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Starting pay is twenty dollars an hour, uh, those interested may apply to Rockaway Borough Police Headquarters. And then also a reminder, National Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, August sixth, from six P M to nine P M at Fireman's Field. Also, just looking at my calendar here. Our scheduled meeting for August twenty-second, which is our second meeting in August, uh, will be canceled due to a lack of quorum. I also need a closed session tonight for contract negotiation and personnel. Motion to accept your report, oh, and then I do have, uh, some information on affordable housing. Uh, the state of New Jersey is entering into its new round of affordable housing, known as the fourth round for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-five. Rockaway will need to prepare for this new fourth round compliance plan, which will involve adopting a housing element by June twenty twenty-five. One of the most notable changes from the current third round, the fourth round Affordable Housing Compliance Plan will be the reduction in courts and court-appointed special masters. Rather, the new round will give calculation powers and planning back to the Department of Community Affairs and municipalities. And, you know, a few more bullet points, but that's not a good thing, because basically they're using the math and calculations for Rockaway Borough as they would for Patterson, or Newark, or Jersey City, you know, so it's, you know.
So the only thing I can add to that, the conversation we had is, um, to your point, yes, that's a bad thing, but there's like methodologies that maybe we can kind of point out that maybe can help us make that number not as high, so that there are some methodologies that we will work with the planner to present, to explain why we don't, can't meet the number that they're coming up with, so. That's why we won't be working close to our opponent.
No, that's perfect, thanks, yeah. And then, uh, the high level timeline for us, uh, October twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, uh, the DCA will publish an advisory report of municipal obligations for fourth round. Though nothing is finalized, it is the understanding that this obligation is advisory, and the borough can use alternative methodology to help determine what the borough field should be allocated, which the minister just mentioned. Uh, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, municipalities must adopt a binding resolution accepting an obligation number. Interested parties may challenge the determination, where DCA will make the final decision by March twenty twenty-five. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, municipalities must adopt their housing element fair share plan for the fourth round, all implementing, it's only ordinance that's supposed to be adopted by March twenty twenty-six. The timeline is approximate, and, you know, certainly subject to change by the DCA or the state, as well as any third party, interested parties may arbitrate to include a project in the plan. Morticoff?
Morticoff.
Alright, motion to accept your report of the mayor?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. For our administrator.
Good evening, everyone, um, just one item, uh, that I have is net on August second, the mayor and I will be having a, um, phone call conference with, uh, the DEP um, regarding the Able Property, um, about another grant that we are looking to maybe, um, apply for, and we just wanna make sure that it's something that is right for the borough, so we will be talking directly with the DEP on that day. And so, that's all I have.
Motion to accept your report of the Mitch here?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. For the clerk?
I have.
Resolutions, consent agenda. One thirty-four dash twenty-four, authorize release of land used for escrow, fourteen B Street. One thirty-five dash twenty-four, authorize release of street opening escrow, one oh three at South Avenue. One thirty-six dash twenty-four, award contract, firefighter turnout gear. One thirty-seven dash twenty-four, authorize renewal of shared services agreement with Rockaway Borough Board of Education, class three officers. One thirty-eight dash twenty-four, appoint Scott Hay as class three officer. One thirty-nine dash twenty-four, appoint Mark Rudowski as class three officer. One forty dash twenty-four, appoint Darren Dajison as class three officer. One forty-one dash twenty-four, authorize execution of interlocal service agreement with Morris Hills Regional District for the police.
Motion to approve resolutions containing the consent agenda commencing with one thirty-four dash twenty-four, all through and inclusive of one forty-one dash twenty-four.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Agliata?
Yes.
Councilman Hayne?
Yes.
Councilman Hurley?
Yes.
Councilman McDonald?
Yes.
Councilman Slackbauer?
Yes.
Council President Burnside?
Yes.
And I have two ordinance for adoption. Twenty-four dash fifteen, the municipal, municipal and board utility salaries, kind of a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
I'd like to open the meeting to the public for this ordinance only.
Can you explain it, please? What's changes, if I know we lost a couple employees, or what's happened with the water department?
So we, um, needed to up the amount for the water foreman, uh, top man, and the fire sub boat officials. So there's two items that changed on some of our events.
Have we replaced the water, uh, the people who left, or just, like, do we have the same positions? In two weeks, or?
So what we have is, we have a shared, so to get the licensing we need, and we need a W two, a C two, and a T two for all the licensing. Really nobody out there with it, so we have a shared service with, um, we're working on shared service with, uh, township for, uh, to have the licensing, and then we hired a water foreman who is working on getting the licensing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions from the public regarding this ordinance only? Hearing that, closing the meeting to the public, roll call, please.
Councilman Agliata?
Yes.
Councilman Hayne?
Yes.
Councilman Hurley?
Yes.
Councilman McDonald?
Yes.
Councilman Slackbauer?
Yes.
Council President Burnside?
Yes.
Twenty-four dash sixteen, amending ordinance eleven ninety-nine, implementing the emergency services volunteer length of service award program, LoSAP, uh, for Dakota Rockaway to, to approve increase in annual contribution to LoSAP for qualifying active fire department volunteers. And as we're saying, this will go on the ballot in, uh, I don't remember. I'd like, uh, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
I'd like to open the meeting to the public for this ordinance only. Hearing that, closing the meeting to the public, roll call, please.
Councilman Agliata?
Yes.
Councilman Hayne?
Yes.
Councilman Hurley?
Yes.
Councilman McDonald?
Yes.
Councilman Slackbauer?
Yes.
Council President Burnside?
Yes.
Alright, I'd like to open the meeting to the public.
Anybody? Go ahead, who go first?
Uh, in a way, yeah, I want to, I want to close it happening. In that meeting we had on Tuesday, it was a good meeting. It was good because on our side, or the public side, residents, we can understand it. But, and you know me very good as a stickler, the DCA codes, DOT, BP, BPU, underground bar cap codes, you know, I live by it. This is a new thing for me, so what we did was, we started contacting like the state itself, and finding out the rules and regulations. One thing we're finding is that interpretation, how they're, Rob Connor and the council, how they're interpreting itself. And it's actually the opposite. So, I think, if we have to come to like the next meeting itself, I think we need like a neutral party to hear this out. So that's what I propose itself, because interpretation is a big thing itself. So we're gonna bring paperwork to show, because we already got paperwork from Rob, and everything, not everything, but most of the stuff that he's been saying, it's interpreted, I wouldn't say wrong, but it's interpreted not the right way itself. So we've been in contact with the, uh, state itself, but I think, like, we need a neutral party to actually, what do you call it, to verify, because if we go back to meeting, they're gonna say, this is how we see it, red, and we see it green. And that's all I got right there. Thank you.
Any other questions to the public?
George?
Motion to close, uh, meetings in public? Second, all favor. Uh, motion to go to the closed session?
Motion.
Second.